I'd like to call this public meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is founded, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, for those who have passed away in our community and for all those suffering due to the pandemic. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. Dunningham?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here. An executive session was held tonight regarding personnel and potential litigation. Please dispense with a reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A. Minutes of the Scranton-Lacawanna Health and Welfare Authority meeting held May 20th, 2021. 3B. Correspondence received from Chief John J. Judge IV, dated June 28th, 2021, regarding fire department budget transfer $103,000. 3C. Correspondence received from DPW Director Tom Preamble, dated June 30th, 2021, regarding DPW budget transfer $76,800. 3D. Report and recommendation dated June 30th, 2021, from Ad hoc Committee for exploring feasibility of renaming Prominent Roadway in honor of United States President Joseph R. Biden Jr. 3E. Correspondence received from City Controller John J. Murray, dated July 1st, 2021, regarding Liquid Fuels Report for the second quarter of 2021.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a quick one. So, I don't know if we're all aware. It started last week. The Jewish Food Fest at Na'ag. It continues till tomorrow. And it's put out by the Jewish Discovery Center. And I know I'm probably going to try to get there tomorrow for a corned beef and pastrami sandwich. So, yeah, that's all I have.
Anyone else?
Yes, with that being said, I also was going to mention that the Jewish Food Festival went on another day until tomorrow at 8:00 p.m. The Electric City Steel Drum Project, the next steel band will perform free at a concert tomorrow night at Na'ag Park, Wednesday, July 7th, at 6:00 p.m. The group is a nonprofit organization offering performance opportunities to area residents. Members of the Steel of Honor Military Veterans Group will perform a few arrangements as well. And there will also be a limbo concert for the kids. So bring a lawn chair and a few friends and pick up a bite to eat at the food festival.
I can attest to the great food at the Jewish Food Festival. I was there yesterday. So, I definitely encourage people to stop by.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Mr. Volenberg?
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Joan Hodawanitz.
Joan Hodawanitz, city resident. Just want to start by saying the Friends of Scranton Public Library will be holding another sidewalk book sale Saturday from 10:00 in the morning until 3:30 afternoon. We're selling books, CDs, DVDs, audiobooks, a whole lot of stuff for both children and adults. Prices are 25 cents to $2. It's a win-win. So, come on by and get a good book. All right. First, I'm still waiting for the collective bargaining agreements for the firefighters' union and the single tax office to be posted on the city's website. They were there once and they got deleted. And I don't know why. And I checked as late as 5:30 this afternoon. They're not there. In my opinion, all financial-type documents that involve taxpayer dollars should automatically be posted on the website and not deleted. Next, I want to know how much money we've spent on the Sorenti Center and how much more we're going to spend. And is there going to be a public caucus on the status of that center? It reminds me of the old joke, you know, how many lawyers does it take to change a light bulb? How many years and how much money does it take to renovate the Sorenti Center? It's been going on for years. Next, with regard to Carl Dealy's appointment as IT Director. I don't believe he has the technical training or work experience to hold that position. Also, the city is never going to find a qualified IT Director if it pays an annual salary of only $64,000. After all, we pay our fire chief $89,500 a year and the police chief $105,165.64 a year. And that's before overtime. Our newly-appointed public health coordinator will make $120,000 a year for the next three years. Bethlehem, which has a population of 75,461 according to the U.S. Census, and it's close to our population, pays its computer system manager $109,134 a year. So, anyone who is qualified to serve as IT Director is worth far more than $64,000. I hope the administration increases the salary for this position in its 2022 budget and searches for a fully qualified candidate. You get what you pay for. And the IT department is too important to have someone leading it that's not qualified. Everything depends on IT. It's your infrastructure for government. And if you can't have it run properly, and that department's been having systemic problems, you're always contracting and bidding out services for it. If it can't be run properly, you might as well close this building down and everybody go home. Either do it right or don't do it at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jack White.
Hi, fellow citizens, fellow participants and government by the people, for the people, of the people. I hope everyone's well and your family and you and all that. I apologize for my hacking, sneezing and wheezing. It only hurts when I breathe, so I should get over it. There's a construct, a government construct, that goes something like this. It's got to do with micro and macro things. And micro being, you know, the individual, the small group, the neighborhood, the gangs, small groups, individuals. Macro has to do with larger groups, organizations, budgets, stuff like that. And we, the speakers, bring micro and macro issues to you. And then you mix them up and throw them up and around and somehow come out with a, you know, some kind of marriage between the micro and macro. And as the theory goes, if the micro part of government is going well and running efficiently, then it will benefit the macro so that the macro can run more efficiently and competently and effectively. And if the macro end of things is going well, then that will have an influence on the individual and the smaller groups and the family and things like this. So, I thought I'd throw that out tonight. I don't have much else tonight. However, I don't want to seem rude at the end of this. But if I don't see an indication that council is going to address the speakers tonight, their concerns, our concerns, then I'm probably going to leave. And again, I'm not hostile. It's not passive aggressive. But I think if the speakers weren't here during citizen participation, then you probably wouldn't be here. So, it's not a hostile kind of a thing. It's just kind of an authentic thing. And I don't want to seem rude.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. White. Next speaker is Les Spindler.
Good evening, council. Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner. 5B. Naming of Scranton Central Expressway for President Joe Biden and also Spruce Street. I, for one, am very proud to say I live in the city that the President of the United States was born in. And I think it's a great idea. Does that mean all of Spruce Street or just the one block?
All of Spruce.
Okay. Again, I think it's a great idea. And like I said, very proud to know that the president's from the city that I live in. You know, some people are against it, but I'm very proud to say that. Next thing, fireworks again. Something's got to be done. It's just ridiculous. It's out of control. They're dangerous. They're illegal where people are doing it. It's got to be 150 feet from residents. I live in Tripp Park. They were all over the place. And people are so inconsiderate, they don't care about anything. My daughter's in with our four-month-old granddaughter. I'm out of town. And she couldn't get her to sleep the last three, four nights. So inconsiderate, it's unbelievable. And we need more police on the road. They should be driving all over a day or two before the Fourth and after. And especially on the Fourth. And they're so dangerous. Like I said, a Scranton resident was killed last year. Two fires a woke spare were caused by fireworks. I don't know if you saw it on the news. And I'm sure you heard about the hockey player was killed by a firework. Professional hockey player. Killed by like a mortar-style fireworks. It's ridiculous. These things should not be allowed in this city. And they should outlaw that sale. But they go to other states and get them anyway. Lastly, on the corner of Dorothy Street and James Robeson Way, where you turn into the Isaac Tripp School, the stop sign there is faded so bad you could barely make out it's a stop sign. So, DPW may be looking into that, changing the sign. And that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Volenberg, can you contact DPW for that faded stop sign?
I will, Mr. Gahn.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ron Elman.
Ronnie Elman from Scranton. Since our governor gave us some freedom, I've just been running around like the good old days. It made me run into a lot of people that I hadn't seen for a year or so. I wasn't out there to win friends and influence people, of course. I wrote down a bunch of things in an envelope and things I remembered what they told me. I'd like to state some of them. I talked to quite a few people. I mean, not more than, I mean, a bunch of people. You ready? The worst mayor Scranton has ever suffered under because of her administration. Now, I heard this dozens of times. But everybody said they had some hope for her. It wasn't forever. The worst two commissioners whose incompetent policies are going to do nothing but cost us foreclosures and abandements. The state needs to come in and run the school system, get rid of Finan, get rid of Shapiro. Very, very disliked man. It was, I mean, very unpleasant things said about Shapiro sort of surprised me. Everyone was adamant about the name of street after Mr. Biden, President Biden, solely because of the expense and problems involved. And they think if you want to go through with it, that the local Democratic Party should have to pay for everything, not the taxpayers, the Democratic Party, which I thought was a good idea. This was way at the bottom. It says, "Elect a whole new city council." But it was way down there, you know. I don't think it... Then I heard this a lot. Kyle should have run for the mayor. He was only about 1,000 votes less than Paige for his council seat, which I didn't keep up with that. But I thought she had a whole lot more votes than, was it 6,000, 8,000 or something? I don't know. And I don't know how Cartwright got elected. I didn't hear one good thing from anybody about him giving all that money to the eight colleges, universities, when they have endowments. And then giving the monthly law firm saying they were so diminished and impoverished that they qualified for $350 to a million-dollar loan, right when there was a mile-long line of vehicles to get food, you know. Very bad choice. And the rain tax, of course. That'd be turned into an authority, probably, and end up a $100 house tax before everybody's finished with it. And then you got the reassessment, you know. How far can taxes go? Now, if you people, everybody is so dedicated to downtown, you don't know what's happening in our neighborhoods. You want to see the future of Scranton with all these LLCs in New Jersey and New York, railtors buying up everything. Go to the 400-block South Main Street and look. You can't use a sidewalk because it's full of cars. The houses are just dilapidated as it can be. Across the street, there is a bad crowd hangs out at the Walgreens parking lot. No matter what they do, they can't seem to get rid of them. That's the, if you don't do something about the people buying all this abandoned properties and houses, that's what's going to happen to half of Scranton while you're just so dedicated on downtown, you don't realize it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elman. Next speaker is Nick Fallon.
Hi, my name is Nick Fallon. I am a homeowner on Forest Street. And I appreciate all the graduations for veterans, things of that nature. I'm a veteran. I did my four years in the military, got out, went back to school. So, what I would like to bring up today is a topic that was already somewhat covered with the fireworks. On, what was it, the Fourth? I had woken up probably around 12 o'clock and I had heard like industrial, like commercial fireworks out in front of my house. The next day I went out, there was firework debris right on my porch. So, I have a picture of it. It's, like they said, it's kind of getting out of hand with the fireworks. And I know that Mayor Cognetti has been working on, I think it was Act 43, to try to get that regulated. I had a suggestion for like parking, I guess, on Forest Street. A lot of my neighbors are elderly. One of my neighbors is 97 years old. One of them's 83. Like, there are houses that are on that street that park like eight, maybe eight vehicles or more for one household, which is ridiculous and shouldn't happen. I have experience as a local government individual. I interned for Swatara Township when I went to Penn State Harrisburg for public policy. I know that downtown, we have the meters and everything with that. I wanted to suggest possibly reviewing like permits for households because I think that that would minimize that. I think a good thing that would come out of that, there might be less violence, crime, because there are people flat-out abandoned in cars. Like, you can see cars all over the place where the officers don't really have the recourse due to the current ordinances to be able to kind of take care of some of the stuff. I called yesterday. I had one of the neighbors parks in blocks my elderly individual's driveway. It's a private driveway. And they'll park right in front of it, put their four ways on. And I said something last night. I was like, "I'm done with this." Because I know that it was the neighbors across the street that had set off the fireworks because like they've just been very brash, I guess, lately with COVID. I'm not a combat veteran, but like, that's something that, like, somebody who has PTSD, things like that, like, it's not, I know that it's being worked on, I guess, with that. But my big suggestion would be kind of reviewing parking permits because I think that that would help the city cut down on crime. You wouldn't have as many abandoned vehicles on the roads. It's really mostly all that I had to talk about. I don't want to, I know you guys have other people. I didn't want to take up a bunch of your time. But I figured that's a good suggestion for maybe even not just Forest Street, other streets, because sometimes there are people going like 40, 50 miles an hour up my street. And like Isaac Tripp is right up the road. There's kids that live on the street. So, I figured I would suggest that. And I really appreciate you guys' time and thank you.
Mr. Fallon, if you want to leave your number or your email with Ms. Herbster, we can get you, there's a process, excuse me, for permit parking. So, if you were interested in exploring that on Forest Street, there's paperwork that you have to fill out. It comes to council and then the city will send officials out to assess the area. So, if you were interested in that, if you want to leave your information with her, we can get you that.
Definitely. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Have a nice night. Next speaker is David Dobson.
Good evening. Dave Dobson, resident of Scranton. I have a question on this IT. There's no way that you could boost the salary of the IT department at this time, right? So, we have to kind of grant Mayor Page some leeway there. Maybe she's doing the best with what she got to work with, too. It shouldn't be so condescending about her. The fireworks, I was out of town for the day. I often wondered if we couldn't get a field and a fire department and a police department and let all these crazies go into this big field and pay a fee to set off their fireworks and keep them out of the neighborhood. It's, I'd be a little disturbed with somebody if they set my house on fire, although I didn't really have a lot really close to my house. So, it's not a problem with me. I would urge once again, everybody, please, if you're not vaccinated, vaccinate as soon as possible. And a thought occurred to me about the school district and the lack of money, which could be as high conservatively as $300 million over the last 10 years. Maybe they should be complimented by being able to at least keep the schools open and together somewhat. I know they have a debt. But that debt would be easily payable if we ever got that kind of money that the state is obligated to pay. And I am a little disturbed about the county charging all these extra fees. I felt that they were somewhat deceptive and I'm a little disappointed in that. I was under the impression that it was going to be 5%. And apparently, we're adding plenty to it. I'd like to approach you guys and pass out something here.
Sure.
I'm like a big old hound dog on a rabbit with this. I'm very disturbed. Mr. Mastriano, a state senator. And by reading the article, it seems like he may have the power to subpoena the voting machines and ballots from Pittsburgh and Philadelphia. That's going to cost quite a bit of expense. It's been settled quite a while. I mean, we didn't have a lot of violence over 2,000, which was obviously, obviously stolen election in Florida. Those ballots weren't counted. Hanging chads weren't counted. I mean, if the chad was hanging, it obviously was the intent of the voter to vote for that person. And countless ballots weren't counted. And of course, we wound up with one necessary war, another unnecessary war, and then a huge recession at the end of it. And run-up on fuel prices and everything else. People sitting around in the cold. They couldn't pay $350, $375 a gallon for heating oil. So, these things do affect us. And it's to call and complain. It's 1-884-533-2211, 202-224-3121, and 202-225-3121. Let your senators know and your congressmen. And needless to say, I'm real tired of hearing about a stolen election and people marching in Philadelphia. And they're entitled to their opinion, but not their own facts. And that's all there is to it. It's time to wake up and start acting like Americans, not un-Americans. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Next speaker is, I think, Mr. Lawrence, but I'm not positive. I think it's you, but I don't want to mispronounce your last name. Yes? Okay. Sorry. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Paul Lakhounis, living in Scranton. I'd be pleased if I had two strokes on my even talking.
Sure.
To ask you a question. The Linden Street Bridge, it's deteriorating. Interesting, it's on the north side. It's all deteriorating. There's four rebar, concrete coming down. Occasionally, we dropped off a piston avenue on top. And we walked down, I counted 21 dilapidated houses that were filled with litter, junk, onboarded up, wires hanging down. That's serious problem. A lot of litter, there's a lot of graffiti downtown, a lot of litter downtown. I'm against renaming the streets for Biden. I'm a Christian man. He's pro-abortion. He has no morals and values. That's my opinion. We can't name streets after people or like that. We just can't. Also, on the Bible Avenue, we can't go downhill. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Volenberg, can you address his concerns with the appropriate department? And Mr. Volenberg, can you address his concerns with the appropriate departments?
I will, Mr. Gahn.
Thank you. That exhausts the sign-in sheet for tonight, would anyone else like to address council?
Norma Jeffries, resident of Scranton. And I'm going to speak tonight about our program. And I think I spoke with Mr. Schuster at the last meeting that I was at, and I wasn't quite satisfied with how we proceed through all these final resolutions. So I wasn't here last week to address what final resolutions they are. But in reading these, we have, you know, the final resolutions start, and I think there's nine of them, final resolutions that are going to affect the city of Scranton. And I know that we elect you to have the city and the residents' interest at heart. And I know that we should go by what you say and what you do, that when you vote on these things, that it's for our best interest. However, I think I, Norma Jeffries, need a class one-on-one in how to, how you proceed with these items here. My biggest concern is that there's no one's name here. You know, like who do, how do we, the citizens of Scranton, know who these people are that are, these are going to Director of Public Works? Well, I know that that's Mr. Prambo. The other one is the City of, glasses on. The Committee on Rules, who's that? Committee on Finance, Committee on Finance. And they're going through and they're going to do, let's see here, number service and maintenance fee for the payment of fire department ladder trucks and repairs. Where are they? Can we read, the citizens read about those things and what's going on with those? I've been on our website and it leaves a lot to be desired. I still, you know, keep going through, going through, looking for things to help me understand what's going on here when we have different things. I also wondered, why are we transferring money? For why, you know, why? You know, just explain to us somewhere before we come up to final resolutions. And like I spoke to Mr. Schuster last time I was here, it was too late because once you adopt it, it's too late, it's done. But I just think that we, as citizens of Scranton, need to know more than what's shown on this little piece of paper. Also, when the grant money, you know, the grant money is given and it's awarded, what happens to it? Isn't somebody accountable to us as to what happens with that grant money? What was bought? And so they could tell us, oh, that grant money was spent for this, that, or the other. And then we know that the grant money went for what it was intended for and that we can really see a difference in the city of Scranton with all the grant money. That's all I have to say.
I can address some of your questions. So I think to address your first question about what's behind the legislation, in other words, if you just read that pamphlet there, you're correct, you would want more information. So if you go on the city's website, under the council page, and you click on the agenda for tonight's meeting, you can click on the piece of legislation and see all the backup. One of the things that I had asked the administration to do and that they have done is to provide a simple fact sheet with several questions. Where did this legislation originate from? Who's responsible for this? What impact on the budget? Why should council unanimously support this? So they do fill that out and that's all there. So if you go on the city's website, you can see that.
I wasn't able to find anything.
Okay, we can, Ms. Herbster can show you, I can, we can send you an email with the link to it so that you can see it. But I checked it today and I know that you should be able to access it. So that should take care of those concerns about, okay, what is this and what's behind it?
So for those people that don't have access to a computer, then what do, you know, what do they do?
Yeah, so if you don't have access to the internet, which I know some residents don't, you can request a copy of the agenda and all the backup through our office. We can mail it out to you, you can come down and pick it up. Now, under our rules of council, it is twenty-five cents a copy, because there's a cost to that. That's why I made an effort to make sure that we got everything online. So, because in the past, when I first got on council, people would come down and have to pay for that, which I thought was ridiculous. So that's why we put everything on the internet.
Okay.
And in terms of the, your question about the resolutions and the ordinances, we follow the rules of council, which we approve every two years, every time we reorganize. Kevin, do you want to take a second and explain what's behind the, why it's a resolution and why it's an ordinance?
So, Mrs. Jeffries, resolutions are typically reserved for items that won't be part of the permanent code of the city. Ordinances are essentially the regulations and law of the city. So they require additional readings under our rules of council. That way it gives citizens like you additional time to review and offer your opinions and reactions regarding those ordinances. So ordinances become part of the official code, they're law. Resolutions are more for less formal actions by council to appoint members to the mayor's administration, to take other action like that.
Okay, thank you.
And resolutions will be on the agenda for two weeks and ordinances will be on for three weeks.
That's right.
And that's just conforming to the rules of council. And the rules of council are posted on the city's website under that council page. But if you have trouble accessing it, just call and we'll walk you through it.
Okay. Now, my final question about the grants, you know, I'm always curious when I see that the city has been granted, you know, grants, and I think, well, where's it going? I don't see a difference. Just like the street signs, I still don't see a difference.
We can get you an answer on that as well. And I'm sorry, but your time is up too, I don't want to go over the time.
But they took it up too.
I know. And we'll get you an, we're supposed to receive a report on the signs. I talked to Mr. Prambo a couple of days ago. So he's going to provide, I think, a six-month report on what's been done and what they're going to do. Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Gahn, I'd say, Frank, was it last week or was it the week before? I did ask for a breakdown of all the grants that the city has applied for since January. Can we just follow up on that to see if we can get that information? To see what grants have been applied for and then what grants have been approved?
I will, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Coyne.
Tom Coyne, Manuka. City taxes collected by the county. So the law firm decided under pressure, it was making too much at the ten percent. So to remedy that, the majority of the county commissioners decided excess fees would not be returned to the city, nor the taxpayers, but the five percent would be returned to the county. So we have a no-bid contract with a law office that in return pays half of its fees back to the contracting agency. From the dictionary, some common kickback warning signs.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, one second, Mr. Coyne, could you just, yep, the clock, that's okay. We gave you a couple of extra seconds, so we'll let you go on that, we'll take it away next week, no kidding.
Some common kickback warning signs, no competing bidding process, lack of appropriate supervision during the process, higher-than-average prices, goods and services, vendors that are in an industry where kickbacks are common. The county hires a law firm, no bid, and then has them return, not to the taxpayer, but to the county, fifty percent of the earnings. Smells like a kickback. Lawrence West, his experience noted is more targeted towards the DPW as it relates to stormwater, flood control, Department of Engineers, heavy equipments, and he even has a CDL so he can move most of the equipment that's physically out there. His resume lists he is currently and has been a board member of Scranton tomorrow. It lists him as a board member in Valley in Motion, though on the actual site, it lists him as a regional director. With Scranton tomorrow, he'll probably have to recuse himself from those processes because it does have a appearance of a conflict of interest, which was reflected under the advisory opinion twenty-one zero zero four that when you're transacting business with an official capacity with other, any other business entity or public where you are a public officer, director, agent, or member who owns a material interest. And P actually kicks the material interest as even something that is self-promotion for yourself and political means. Now, it's the Averro contract. Averro contracts for six hundred eighty-eight hours at a hundred thirteen thousand four hundred eighty-seven dollars. That works out to be a hundred ninety-four dollars an hour on average. To put that in context, an employee on average has two thousand eighty-seven work hours per calendar year. The IT director paid for the year at the equivalent of the Averro pay would earn four hundred and four thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Availability, the IT director would be available for an extra three hundred ninety-nine hours for a year, or over two-thirds more availability and no overtime, and it would not cause overruns, as a contract is a minimum for an IT director's salary. To use Mr. Dealey as IT director, a position he is not qualified for, requires more outside-party contracting to do the work an IT director would. The argument is set, a set number sixty-four thousand a year is what the position offered. And increasing it outside the budget is not proper. But we are not only increasing it, but we are compounding it by filling the position and then subcontracting those same duties to outside vendors for an additional expense. We have a director position at sixty-four thousand along with an IT support contract at twelve thousand seven hundred fifty a month. We're looking at an additional contract for fifty thousand for this year and a minimum of sixty-three for next year. Looking at the total prices, to assure that we do not exceed the sixty-four thousand dollars for the IT director, we're in fact paying two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars to secure that position. Bedrock alone has cost from April to now thirty-eight thousand two hundred fifty dollars, which is roughly half the amount of your IT director in three months. It's a half a year of what your IT director would cost. It was noted Mr. Dealey will work with Bedrock to determine the city needs recently. I thought this was the job of an IT director. I would suggest with, Mr. Dealey is not qualified, but I would ask the council to consider with Mr. West tabling the motion this week for his position and kicking it back to the mayor and giving her the option of retaining Mr. Dealey in his old position of business administrator, which he does have the position, or moving forward with Lawrence West, giving her the opportunity to choose the best qualified candidate to continue with the government rather than pushing forward the directive for Lawrence West today.
Thank you, thank you. Would anyone else like to address council? Mr. Volenberg?
Fifth order, five A motions.
Councilman Schuster, do you have any, have any motions or comments tonight?
Yes, I was gonna, I wanted Mr. Volenberg to reach out. I do have a city property that I got a complaint about. The address is seven thirty-eight Prescott Avenue. Just to get an update on the property, where it stands, I do believe it's a city-owned property. And right now I'm seeing that the neighbors are telling me there's a lot of dumping going on at the site. And just let's get an update to see who owns it and if we can get some maintenance on that property. That's all.
Thank you, Councilman McAndrew, any motions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Volenberg, so we've been in great discussion with the property, eight fourteen to eight sixteen Luzerne Street, and you provided me an update, thank you very much. And for the most part, the update stated that we're waiting for the magistrate. Since that update, the resident that's facing, you know, that has all these concerns and has been bringing them forth to me for months now, understands that we're waiting for, you know, the magistrate to do his piece and find, actually find the owner of this property. But what still continues is the amount of garbage that's there. There's still, since we first brought it forward, syringes all over this property, so, or near the property. So of course, like you said, he understands and appreciates, you know, that we're waiting on the magistrate, but all the other health-related issues and blight issues still remain. So if you could please circle around and help us out with that one.
Yeah, we'll escalate that tomorrow morning, sir.
Thank you very much. What else, what else? Okay, so last week I brought up the Hometown Hero banners program that, you know, a lot of banners were in rough shape. So I'd like to thank Mr. Prambo from DPW because I reached out to him. And he reached out to Urban Electric, who was the group that installed them. So they took care of all that and fixed everything. So I'm very happy to hear that and thank them. And now that Officer Butler's back, we know that he was away, and that's fantastic. Can we check on or get an update of the traffic study on St. Anne Street for angle parking?
Yes, sir.
And that is all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Othra, any motions or comments tonight?
Yes, I have a few. First, I'd like to touch again on the firework issue, which I know I brought up last week. Many residents have brought up to me as being a major concern for them and their quality of life in the city of Scranton. I would like for us to send correspondence to the SPD to ask them how much we've given in tickets for breaking the ordinance for fireworks because it's supposed to be a three hundred dollar citation. I want to ensure that the ordinance is being enforced because right now I know to many people, it doesn't appear that it is with how frequent they hear the fireworks going off in their neighborhoods. And also in the ordinance, we have that, you know, we have the exceptions for just a few holidays, Fourth of July being one of them, but it's for one day. It's not for every day leading up to that holiday and then every day afterwards. So, you know, I think most people are understanding about the holidays, but it's all the other days that the fireworks have continued that. It's really disruptive and very frustrating. So if we can find out, you know, how that ordinance is being enforced and how many citations have been given. I know that the police have a very important job to do and there are many issues that, you know, they need to address when they're working in the city. But, you know, this isn't a victimless crime. There's people who are, you know, do suffer from the fireworks by getting injured or, you know, maybe issues with their properties. And the other thing, I know that the mayor, along with other local mayors, sent a letter to the state to request repeal of Act forty-three. I would like to make a motion for council to do the same and send a letter.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second on the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and the motion passes.
Okay, thank you. And the one other issue I wanted to bring up once again was Harrison Avenue, which we continue to get complaints about, which I have to drive on every day as well. And I'm very close to going on a walk up the entire street to take pictures of all the problem residents. And I don't want to have to do that, but I would like to do that with an inspector perhaps. So I would like to make a request of the Lips Department that I set up a date with one of their inspectors to do a walkthrough of Harrison Avenue and to come up with a plan for that roadway. And that's everything that I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Dunnehugh, any motions or comments tonight?
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. I just have two comments. So the Sereni Center was brought up tonight. A caucus is being scheduled with the chief of police and other city officials to give us an update on the Sereni Center. And we've also asked for another breakdown of how much money's been spent and what the future looks like with that building. Also Meadowbrook, the Meadowbrook Creek project. We do have legislation on the agenda tonight. That caucus is also being scheduled with city officials, the engineers, DEP, the state, to give not only council an update, but also the residents and the public an update on that project. It is a very, very large and a very involved project. Also, I received an update today that council will be receiving legislation on several of the Act forty-seven recommendations included in the exit plan. For example, the debt management policy and other policies that... policy and other policies that were recommended in our exit plan. So I was told today that those should be coming down within the next few weeks, so I was glad to hear that. Also, I wanted to double-check Mr. Volenberg. I don't believe we received a response to the question I raised on the casual, the $50,000 for the casuals in the budget for the Parks and Recreation Department?
That's correct. We have none.
Okay. So if we could just follow up by the end of the week on that, again, we're getting towards the end of the summer, but we, council made sure to put money in the Parks and Recreation budget for part-time workers like they've had in the past to go out and cut grass. As everyone knows, we have 30-some parks in the city, and it's very, very hard to cover all that ground with the limited number of employees we have. So I am disappointed that we have not used that money yet and have not used that program. I hope that if it's not going to be done this year, at least it'll be done next year. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
5B for introduction and ordinance authorizing the renaming of Spruce Street and the Central Scranton Expressway in honor of United States President Joseph R. Biden Jr.
This time I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? On the question, I first want to thank the committee members who helped put this all together. This committee formed back in February of this year. It is an idea I had when President Biden was inaugurated in January. The members who were on the committee were Councilman Dunnehy, Kevin Hayes, our council solicitor, who drafted the, and wrote the report that's in third order tonight, Larry West, the mayor's business administrator, Don King, the mayor's city planner, Mark Dewer, who works for the county Parks and Recreation Department, Leslie Collins, who is the executive director of Scranton Tomorrow, and Roberta Jaddick, who is a member of the Green Ridge Neighborhood Association. I appreciate, really appreciate it. We've met several times over the last few months, and I appreciated all of their input and their help. I am not sure if we will be able to say again in our lifetime that not only did we have a vice president, but we also had a president who grew up for the first 10 years of his life on North Washington Avenue in Green Ridge. And as we know, Scranton played a tremendous role in the life of Joe Biden and the life of his family members. And let's not forget that Joe Biden's ancestors, the Bluets, immigrated to Scranton from Ballina County, Mayo, Ireland, where the Gahens are also from, and my ancestors, in the mid-1800s and made great contributions to our city. So not only did Joe Biden make a contribution to our city, but his family members throughout our city's history also did. So it's fitting that we honor a man who embodies the spirit of Scranton, which I believe can be summed up by what his father told him when he was a young boy growing up in Green Ridge, and that is, when you get knocked down, you get back up. Scranton, like President Biden, has seen its share of trials and tribulations, but our people always get up, we always fight back, and we always persevere. President Biden, through his conduct and through his Scranton spirit, has given us hope that our brightest days are ahead of us. He has given literally almost his entire life to public service, and during that time, he has never once forgotten about the city of Scranton where he was born and raised. It is an honor and a privilege to be able to vote on this legislation tonight, and I truly believe that it will have a positive impact on the city of Scranton and will allow future generations of Scrantonians to know to never give up on their dreams. Thank you. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5C for introduction, a resolution authorizing the city of Scranton to accept a grant from the Moses Taylor Foundation, the purpose of which is to support the city's efforts to improve the health and wellness of the people of northeastern Pennsylvania.
This time I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5D for introduction, a resolution approving in accordance with Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended, a plan of financing of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority and declaring that it is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the city of Scranton for the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority to undertake a project for O.S. Johnson Technical Institute, TDBA, Johnson College.
This time I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, in our caucus, I had mentioned that I was interested in seeing some more details on the plans for Johnson College, what these funds would be used towards, so if we could please request that, Mr. Volenberg. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file of the council number 76, 2021, and ordinance, amending file of the council number 56, 2021 as amended, which amended file of the council number 8, 1987, and the file of council number 87, 1976, entitled, Providing for the Levy and Collection of a License for All Performers, Entertainers, Sporting Teams, Musical Groups, Bands, Theatrical Cast, Dancing Groups, Recital Groups, Paid Lecturers, and Speakers by Increasing Fees to Reduce the One-Day Fee in Section 3 from $50 to $20 Due to the COVID-19 Pandemic.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A, pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, file of the council number 73, 2021, amending file of the council number 10, 2020, and ordinance as amended, entitled, Authorizing the Mayor and Other Appropriate City Officials to Grant a Special Encroachment Permit to City Retail Businesses and Restaurants to Operate on City Right-A-Ways, to Extend the Time Period from December until December 31, 2021.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunnehy?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, file of the council number 74, 2021, amending file of the council number 35, 2020, and ordinance as amended, entitled, General City Operating Budget 2021 by Transferring $76,800 from account number as noted, non-departmental expenditures contingency to account number as noted, Department of Public Works refuse rental and vehicle equipment to provide sufficient funding for the rental of two refuse vehicles through the 2021 budget period.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
The recommendation from the Committee on Finance is the recommend final passage of 7B.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question?
On the question, in caucus, I did discuss this somewhat. Mr. Hayes was looking into whether there was a budget line item for three vehicles, two PacMasters and one recycling truck from the 2020 budget, and look to see where this money went, and right now with the rental of these vehicles, there is a waitlist to get vehicles like this, so I'd also like Mr. Volenberg to reach out to see if the city is planning on making some purchases, or if, you know, they've reached out to the proper channels to get, to get on a waitlist to receive any of those vehicles.
Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunnehy?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, file of the council number 75, 2021, amending file of the council number 35, 2020, and ordinance as amended, entitled, General City Operating Budget 2021 by Transferring $103,000 from account number as noted, non-departmental expenditures contingency to account number as noted, Department of Public Works garages service and maintenance fee for the payment of the fire department ladder truck repairs.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunnehy?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 180, 2021, appointment of Lawrence D. West, 220 Linden Street, Apartment 509, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18503, to the position of business administrator effective June 1, 2021.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, so, on the question, my position hasn't changed on the appointment of this position since last week. Over a week ago, I requested from the HR department a job description. I thought it was a valid and reasonable request. It's over a week, guess what I received? Crickets, right? So, and again, it's nothing personal. We talked in caucus about, you know, not having experience or the skill set for IT, and this is the same. There's zero experience, nothing personal, but we have to, we didn't exit Act 47 yet. So there's a lot of unknowns. I can't comfortably vote yes for this or the next position. And it's funny, back in 5C for the public health coordinator, which was posted, I think, back in January, guess what's written in there? There's a job description with roles and responsibilities, preferred expertise, and an application process. None of this was followed for this business administrator appointment, and this is for a private contractor that's grant-funded. So, as I said last week, you know, I might upset a couple of people in City Hall, but I'd rather upset a couple of people in City Hall than 70,000 taxpayers, and, you know, I'm looking out for their best interests. This doesn't work for me, so I'll be voting no.
Anyone else on the question?
Yeah, on the question, my opinion from last week still stands as well. You know, in the past, well, like we said, we're exiting Act 47. I do feel someone in finance and city planning would be better suited for this position. In the past, in the last few business administrators, we had had a background in city planning and finance, and I think that's got us to the point that we're at right now with the exit of Act 47. I think it was said in public comment tonight that not having the right person or the right credentials and education and experience for the position also compounds the fact that we're running over when it comes to budget line items. So the pattern in the city that I'm seeing is that we're using contractors to make up for experience and education that some of these people may not have, so I'll also be voting no tonight.
Anyone else on the question? As I stated last week, I'm going to be voting for Mr. West. I have had many interactions with him and dealings with him over the last eight years as he was the chief of staff for State Senator John Blake. I am confident that he will be able to perform the job of business administrator, so I will be voting yes. Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Mr. McAndrew?
No.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunnehy?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 181, 2021, appointment of Carl Dealey, 711 North Webster Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, to the position of Information Technology Director within the Office of Business Administration effective June 1, 2021.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend a final vote on item 7E.
Second.
On the question?
I guess I'll start on the question. So we've talked in great detail about the IT department. The budget is almost exhausted, and Mr. Dealey, who was the business administrator, who prepared the budget last year, got moved over there. He had the skill set to be the business administrator. Now he's moved over to the IT department. He actually admits that he doesn't have the experience. So this is another example where I can't vote for it. This is not in the best interest of, and, but, you know, almost exceeding the budget. This issue was known in January, so like I said in caucus, you know, it was poor planning. So there's an old saying, if, you know, if you fail the plan, your plan to fail. So that's what happened with this department, and I feel it's going to happen again with what I just voted on, the other appointment. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question?
Yes, on the question, so the IT department is a perfect example of using professional services and contracted services to make up for some of the things that the city doesn't have, and at this point in time, I think it's about 92% of the IT professional services budget has been utilized. There's going to be a budget transfer for that to cover costs moving forward, but I think it's a perfect example of why we have to have the correct people with the correct education and experience in these positions. And nothing personal with Mr. Dealey, he has a great resume, just not suited for this position.
Thank you. On the question, I'll also be voting no on this appointment tonight, and as the gentleman to my right stated, nothing personal, my interactions with Mr. Dealey have been very good over the last two or so years. He's been a gentleman and always responsive to council, but it does come down to qualifications. Mr. Dealey is not qualified to be the IT director, period. The IT department director requires a very specific skill set, which the mayor herself laid out in the job posting that went up months and months ago, that was issued by the Human Resources Department. And unfortunately, Mr. Dealey does not meet most of the basic requirements, one of which is a degree in information technology. That's not anything anyone a peer created. That is coming directly from the mayor and her administration. My other concern with this, besides Mr. Dealey not being qualified to be the IT director and not really having a robust background in IT, which as I said is a very specific field and very technical field, is the fact that on top of that, the mayor is asking Mr. Dealey to not only be the IT director, but to also perform the functions of the office of business administrator. I had a meeting with the mayor and several other city officials in which I questioned this and asked point-blank whether or not, within the memo where it states that the IT director would also still be responsible for the, basically the budget preparation and financial planning, would that just be for this year? Because I could understand that since there would be a transition, and I was told no, that that would be the way it was going to be moving forward. I have a major concern with that. First of all, as I stated, Mr. Dealey is not technically qualified to be the IT director. So now you're taking a person who's not technically qualified to be in that position, and he's not only doing that position, which he's not qualified for, but he's also still performing some of the functions of the business administrator. We went down this road before in 2017 under the Courtright administration. I have a copy of the Act 47 Recovery Plan, and one of the recommendations in the Act 47 Recovery Plan from the Pennsylvania Economy League was, under financial management, the allocation of administrative responsibilities. And what the Pennsylvania Economy League was recommending to the Courtright administration was to disperse, the dispersion of non-financial or department-specific responsibilities away from the office of business administrator and to the responsible city department. It states the fundamental objective of the operation of the office of business administration should remain the administration of the yearly budget and completion of the audit on a timely basis. The business administrator's office presently assumes responsibility for departmental initiatives outside of its administrative code responsibilities. So essentially, in my opinion, what this administration is doing is reversing that to the IT department. You have an IT director now who is also going to be doing some of these responsibilities. We all understand that we have a strong mayor form of government, and the mayor has, should have the ability to choose her team and run the city as she sees fit. However, when this comes before council and it's very clear that he's not qualified for the position, we cannot in good conscience vote for him, although I do like him as a person and as an individual. The other thing I'll say to break it down for everyone is, I would not hire an electrician to do plumbing work on my house. I wouldn't hire a plumber to cut my hair. The IT department is very, very important, as we all know. Since Mr. Switnicki left, we have seen a lot of problems, a lot of problems. We had to hire, not council, that the mayor, through a no-bid contract, hired a hired a third-party company at twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. We've been asking for a timeline on when that's going to end, when that's going to be bid out, and we're being told that they're still assessing the situation. The bills are racking up. It's very expensive. We did not create this problem. This problem was presented to us, and we cannot, I don't think we can, in good conscience, vote for someone who is really just not qualified for the position. So, that's why I'll be voting no. Thank you. Anyone else on the question?
Yeah, just briefly on the question, I do agree with what my colleagues said about Mr. Dealy's qualifications for information technology, especially the Director. I do believe that Mr. Dealy has the best interests of the city at heart. I do believe that he brings a certain skillset and certain experience and qualifications that do add value. With that being said, it's hard to justify an open-ended appointment to the position of Director of Information Technology. If this was sent down with a sunset date of the end of the year to develop a plan for the IT Department, to oversee the transition to Open Gov, you know, I, I would be willing to consider that, and I more than likely would vote for it. But this is open-ended. Once you approve this, it, it is, it's, is good, it's good for as long as the mayor's the mayor, and I have a problem with that in terms of long-term. If there was a, if this came down as a short-term solution to this issue, I'd be fine with that. Because at the end of the day, we did approve, before this year, there was only three positions in the city's IT Department. We did approve the addition of two additional positions that the mayor had proposed in her two thousand twenty-one budget. And that's where the salary rate was set. We lowered it maybe by a thousand or two, I think, on, for two positions, but it wasn't like, you know, we lowered it so much that now we can't hire an IT Director. This was what came down from the administration. So, for those reasons, I'm going to vote no.
Anyone else on the question?
Yes, I am in agreement with my colleagues here, and I don't want to rehash what's already been said, but I did mention last week that, yeah, I did, I did find it problematic, this appointment, and that I was understanding, we're in a position where we don't have an IT Director, and we haven't been able to get one, I think primarily because of the salary. So, I could also understand if this was for a shorter period of time, and I, I truly do appreciate the great work that Mr. Dealy has, has done as BA for our city. He's always been very easy to work with, very responsive, and, you know, I felt that he fit well in that position. However, you know, I, I don't think that's the same for, for the IT Director position, and I would also like to see more of a plan for where our IT Department is going. We all know that we needed, needed the new website, the new operation system, and that we need to further develop just our city's technology as a whole to, to catch up. That's, that's very important in today's age, but I, I believe that we need to find someone else for, for the job.
I just want to add one more thing, too. The notion that may be out there that the administration or the mayor's back is against the wall, there's no other option, this is a self-inflicted wound. Back in January, they decided, for whatever reason, to move Mr. Switnicki, who had been the Department Director for a number of years, into another position, whether you want to call that a demotion or not, it's up for debate. And then, but didn't have anyone lined up to take his position as the IT Director. That position's been open since, I believe, January or February. Now, all of a sudden, everyone's pants are on fire, and you need to hire someone who's not qualified. Unfortunately, that's not our problem. We cannot, as I said, in good conscience, let someone be in that position that does not have the skills and the technical requirements that the, this, the administration put out and said they need it, that you would need to be in that position. So, part of this, I think, is a self-inflicted wound. I think we're all committed to making sure that the IT Department is functional and does a good job moving forward, but Mr. Dealy, unfortunately, outside of his accomplishments with, which I agree with Dr. Rothschild as Business Administrator, is not fit for this position. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Schuster?
No.
Mr. McAndrew?
No.
Dr. Rothschild?
No.
Mr. Dunningham?
No.
Mr. Gahn?
No. I hereby declare item seven E failed five-zero.
Seven F for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, resolution number one eighty-two, two thousand twenty-one, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an agreement between the city of Scranton and Fidelity Bank for American Rescue Plan Depository Banking Services from July first, two thousand twenty-one through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of seven F.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, this is an important step in terms of transparency and then also on an accounting perspective. We're going to get a huge influx of ARP money in. We have to justify how we spend that. So, instead of that going into the city's general fund, it will first go into this, this account as a special cities account, and then as we're drawing down or paying out programs, it will be put into the general fund or with that, whatever fund that that program needs to be, that it needs to be put into. And also, moving forward, we, there will be a RFQ going out for a, an auditor to both do pre-audit and post-audit of all these funds, so we make sure that the way we spend it is completely above board and meets the regulations set forth by the federal government.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven F legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven G for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, resolution number one eighty-three, two thousand twenty-one, ratifying and approving the city of Scranton application for grant funds from the Commonwealth Financing Authority of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a flood mitigation program grant in the amount of seventy-one thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars to repair and/or replace a collapsed Gabion basket wall previously constructed upstream of the South Webster Avenue Bridge, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant, coordinate, and disburse the grant funds as appropriate.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As Chair for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item seven G.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven G legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven H for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number one eighty-four, two thousand twenty-one, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract between the city of Scranton and Green Tech Energy Services, Inc., to install retrofit LED lighting.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item seven H.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question?
On the question, Mr. Volenberg, over the course of about four weeks, I've asked on two occasions whether this retrofitting was being done at the recommendation of the old study that was contracted between, I think it was contracted in January of two thousand nineteen. That question did go to the administration, made it through the proper channels, and we haven't received an answer yet, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Schuster.
All right. I think there is a timeline with this. I think they're trying to receive some kind of funding. I, I don't know if anyone is aware of that. But I, I've asked this question on two occasions over the course of four weeks, and I, I will be voting no on this for the fact that I did not get my answers.
Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven H legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven I for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number one eighty-five, two thousand twenty-one, ratifying and approving the city of Scranton application for grant funds from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for a greenways, trails, and recreation program grant in the amount of one hundred and nine thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars for repairs and upgrades to Oakmont Park, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant, coordinate, and disburse the grant funds as appropriate.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item, item seven I.
Second.
On the question? I'm hoping that we can use some of the American Rescue Package funds for an investment into our park system. Very soon, we'll be receiving a report from McLean Associates on a comprehensive park study, and there are parks throughout the city that, like Oakmont and Robinson Park, which need major, major upgrades. Naught Park is another example. So, I'm hoping that as part of this conversation on the use of these funds, if we might be able to use a portion of them towards not only the, the rehabilitation of these parks, but the ongoing maintenance as well. Anyone else on the question?
Yeah, just to add to that, I, I mean, I remember growing up and spending time at both of these parks that are on our list, and they were two of the best parks in the city, and they didn't go into disrepair just out of the blue. It was because of a lack of maintenance. So, we absolutely need a maintenance program to, you know, going forward to upkeep, do the proper upkeep on all of our parks.
And I would add to that as well, that the, I want to thank the, the Parks and Recreation Department. There are not a lot of employees in the Parks and Recreation Department. I think there's only one or two, maybe one, up at Naught, stationed up at Naught Park. McDade Park has nine or ten, for an example. The, the men that we have in the Parks and Recreation Department do a phenomenal job. I live across the street from a park. They go to extreme lengths to make sure that the park is maintained, the grass is cut, garbage is picked up. I see them constantly in, in other parks throughout the city, but they are stretched thin. It's very difficult to cover thirty-some parks. And what I, we alluded to before with the fifty thousand dollar funding that we put in the budget for a program where casuals, casual employees would go out, as they have in the past, and help to cut the grass and, and maintain the parks. I hope to see that happen, but I do think we need to make a significant, significant contribution and investment in our park system. I live over by McLean Park in North Scranton. When they rehab that park, the whole entire neighborhood changed. It was a great neighborhood to begin with, but it strengthened the neighborhood. When these two projects go through, God willing, and that the funding is, is awarded hopefully, those parks will change that neighborhood as well for the better. Thank you. Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven I legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven J for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number one eighty-six, two thousand twenty-one, ratifying and approving the city of Scranton application for grant funds from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for a greenways, trails, and recreation program grant in the amount of two hundred and forty-four thousand six hundred and ninety-eight dollars for repairs and upgrades to Robinson Park, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant, coordinate, and disburse the grant funds as appropriate.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item seven J.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven J legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven K for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, resolution number one eighty-seven, two thousand twenty-one, ratifying and approving the city of Scranton application for grant funds from the Commonwealth Financing Authority of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a flood mitigation program grant in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars for the Meadowbrook Flood Control Project, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant, coordinate, and disburse the grant funds as appropriate.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item seven K.
Second.
On the question? On the question, we are working with the administration on a public caucus before council, not only for the council's information, but most importantly, for the residents who live out along the Meadowbrook Creek Project. As I stated in the, in the caucus earlier, this is going to be a major, major project and a major undertaking involving millions of dollars. So, we want to make sure that the neighbors out there are kept up to speed on everything that's going on. Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven K legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth Order eight A for consideration by the Committee on Rules for adoption, resolution number one seventy-three, two thousand twenty-one, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract between the city of Scranton and O'Vero Advisors to provide business process digitization support to the city of Scranton for its new operating program.
Thank you. On this piece, this was tabled a few weeks ago. What I would like to do, Mr. Hayes and Mr. Volenberg, is to write up an amendment to this, which would limit the contract to fifty thousand dollars, so the fifty thousand dollar grant for consideration among my colleagues here on council, and then also to get that one question answered about the legal compliance, to make sure we have that on the record. Anybody else on, in Eighth Order? There's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.